All rise please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening everyone. Before the start of the regular meeting, we have a presentation by Joe Salvati on behalf of the Kingdom, Build the Kingdom of Kids Castle. Joe?
Okay. Well, everything's going great. If you remember when we had to first put in the application for the grant, the board approved covering our $36,000 shortfall. And when we did eventually get the grant, the grant came in 27,000 less. So that put us 63,500 short. So we kept fundraising and I'm happy to say that we were ever, we were able to cover that whole gap of the 65, $63,500.
Yay!
So this is a little yay gap. We started out down here and we reached our goal.
Very good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for adding the confidence in us to cover that $36,000 and for the extra $27,000 because if you didn't give us permission, we would have never been able to move forward. So...
That's great. Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you know, every year we ask for nominations to a category we call Unsung Heroes. And you hate this, I know, but unfortunately, too many people wanted you to get the support this year. And it's not because you, you did all this, it's because of who you are and what you've done totally for the township and for your community. So you, sir, are our 2017 Unsung Hero and we are proud to present you with this beautiful plaque that says Doylestown Township 2017 Unsung Hero Award presented, Joe Salvati by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors on September 19, 2017. Woo-hoo! And I have to read the proclamation because it says everything it needs to say. Proclamation, the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors recognizing Joe Salvati for service to our community and naming him the 2017 Doylestown Township Unsung Hero. Whereas Joe Salvati has been a resident of the township since 1997, he served on the township's telecommunication advisory board from 2010 to 2014, and Joe Salvati regularly attends and supports other township committees such as Park and Recreation Board and the Bicentennial Committee, now you really have to come back. Whereas Joe Salvati has served on the Friends of Kids Castle since 2013 where he has worked tirelessly with so many other volunteers to see the first phase of Kids Castle be renovated. And whereas for the past several years, Joe Salvati has served as chairman of the Friends of Kids Castle Committee, and whereas Joe Salvati has obtained hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants and sponsorships from various agencies to complete the renovations to Kid Cast, to Kids Castle, and continues to raise funds for the next phase of building the Kingdom. His ongoing commitment to this project is invaluable. You know, this is for generations of children. It's for generations of children who have already played here and for their, now their moms and dads, those kids are now moms and dads and now they're bringing their kids back. You're doing this for generations of children, past and present and future. So therefore be proclaimed that the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors recognizes Joe Salvati for his service and selfless giving to the Doylestown Township community. We hereby name him the 2017 Doylestown Township Unsung Hero, signed this day by myself and witnessed by Stephanie Mason. Congratulations. Okay, did you have anything else you wanted to say? I mean, are you done with your presentation?
Actually, I'd like to, I'd like to say something if you don't mind.
Please.
I'm so proud to be part of our township. It's truly inspiring to see all the wonderful things that get done here every day. And I thank you for that inspiration. Keep it going and I'll do whatever I can to help. Thank you for this honor today. And thank you for this award. I appreciate it.
All right, follow that, huh? All right, any visitors or public comments? All right, hearing none, moving on. Announcements, we're next going to meet, wait, that's not true. The Board of Supervisors and Ways and Means Committee will hold a 2018 budget work session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So at 6 o'clock, we are meeting with the Ways and Means Committee. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, October 3rd at 4:00 PM. The next township budget meeting after tonight is Tuesday, October 3rd at 2:00 PM. The Thompson Performing Arts Series continues with a free outdoor movie, Beauty and the Beast, Friday, October 20th, at Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park from the 7:00 prime. Leaf and yard waste recycling, Doylestown Township residents only. Drop-off site is every third Saturday at the New Brit entrance to the park from March to December, 9:00 AM to 11:00. Halloween, that's for dogs and their owners. Saturdays, October 21st is Central Park from 10:00 to 1:00. The CB Cares 2017 Pumpkin Fest is Saturday, October 21st at the Meridian Tow Works. I think that's a late afternoon thing because they have the pumpkins starting to, they'll be all lit up in the early evening. You can purchase discount movie tickets from our administrative offices for movies. And fundraisers, EAC magnets are $5, township bicentennial caps are going fast, we only have a few left, they're $18. And the Doylestown Township Park and Recreation in partnership with a premier, World Discovery is offering two trips in 2018. Great Trains and Grand Canyons and Treasures of Ireland. So if you want to go to either one of those fantastic trips, contact our administrative offices for brush shores and highlights and other information. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the regular minutes for August 15, 2017. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes from August 15, 2017.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any questions, changes, corrections?
I had one clarification. On page 13 of the meeting minutes, under A, we're talking about the recycling. We adopted it, but it said we talked about how was the payment calculated and what we, I think what we said it was calculated by weight. That's how we would determine, that's how the distribution is calculated, not just that there's additional revenue.
What paragraph is that?
Paragraph A, authorization to advertise.
Okay. Does everyone agree with that correction? Yes?
Yes.
Noted correction. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
There's some other comments. Do you have one?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did have one on page 14. It says here that Mr. Kelso noted to tie back into the trail at Burpee Road and State Street, a trail off Stony Brook Manor connects to Shady Retreat Road. The telecommunications advisory commission, TAB, recommends completing a final connection. I don't think that's right.
I think it's...
Is that, is that the bike and hike?
Yeah, I think it should be bike and hike and I think it's Stonington Farms.
Right, it's Stony Brook Manor, I guess Stonington Farms. Okay, all right, that other judicial correction thing, then. Anybody else?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else? All in favor with those two corrections?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item is the approval of the minutes from the budget work session for August 23, 2017. Any corrections, changes, questions?
I had one change that I'm quickly looking for. On Dave Tomco's, he mentioned Windy Road and it's written in here as Windy Road and there's two different, they're two different places.
Get in a way in windy?
Yeah, that's it. Where is that at?
It's on page three, under anticipated projects for 2018. Which one was it?
It should be W-I-N-D-E-Y. There it is, thanks. And not, there's windy and windy, but they're two different distinct places.
Okay, that's one correction. Anybody else?
No, I'm good.
Did I hear somebody else have a question for that correction? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Correspondence. Now, 10-10 was on our agenda once before. Pecado has asked us to take a look at this and really wants our support and all other municipality's support, so our legislatures have some ammunition when they're talking to their counterparts on the central and western part of the state. Now this, how, we're, you know, the, the request is opposing House Bill Number 10-10, which is legalization of operator-based video game terminals in, in places in our community. It could be in a Savonlet and it could be in pizzeria, who knows, or whatever other restaurant. So the idea is to, do we really want these gaming terminals in our community? And if you don't have the opportunity to say, "We don't want them in our community," they are, they can be imposed on us whether we want them or not.
We want to be able to regulate.
We want to be able to regulate them, but we also want to be able to say no to them. So that's what this, that's what this resolution is asking us to do, is support that ability to regulate or oppose in the festival, which we choose to do, for our community, for Doylestown Township. And our state representative, Margery Quinn, and Senator Michael Honey has, you know, through Pecado, which is a Bucks County Association of Township Officials, that's what the acronym stands for, which we are members of, so it is important that we support this and that, I would make that motion that we support this opposition to House Bill Number 10-10. Ask for a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Any questions in the discussion?
Yeah, you know, I'll continue to bang the drum, if you will, and not to be obstinate, but I mean, that's Pecado's job, that's what we pay them for, is to give the information to our representatives and that's what they're doing. And I don't think, I, we shouldn't, we should be doing the township's business, not Harrisburg's business. And this is Harrisburg's business. If someone wants to write a letter and support it or be against it, that's fine. I don't think that's our venue to put in resolutions, send it up there and tell them this is what we think. In fact, the majority of, I believe the majority of the residents want gaming machines in the wawa.
No, I don't know. I would want to, as a, as a Board of Supervisors, as a, as a zoning, whatever, I would want to have some input into whether, whether they should be in place or whether they should be regulated.
Right, so just to make sure it's clear, I mean, so approving this doesn't mean we wouldn't have them.
No, no.
It just means we...
Means we can regulate them, yes.
Right. So to Rick's point, if we decided, if the residents decided they really want it, then they would have a plan, we have to come forward and, and we can make that decision then at that point in time. Right. Okay, so I think we accomplish both.
All right, there's a, you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. The ayes have it. Thank you. The other item on the agenda that comes from Pecado is House Bill Number 593, which is really detrimental to us. I'm happy to say there's an update and it failed. The House bill failed. There's, there's some, this House bill was an effort from Harrisburg or the people who are putting the budget together to get money from stuff that we, get funding that we already received and take it away. So they were trying to make up the budget by taking away monies that are already going to the townships for support, like in our pensions and that sort of thing. So that bill failed, but until it got on the agenda, it was a big question. So I'm going to table that. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, support of Citizens Commission for Legislative and Correctional Redistricting, that paperwork you received in your, in your pile of stuff that's, if anyone appears to talk about it, just review it and we can talk about it another time. It's up to you.
I'm moving on.
Weren't they asking that we put a resolution in place for this? Wasn't that the request?
I don't know if Kim, if, Kim Kendall is here?
Oh.
Do you care to, to address this, ma'am?
You have to go to a mic.
Go to the microphone right there, right next to you.
What's being taken?
On television.
Hi, my name is Kim Kendall. I'm a resident of the township. I've been here, living here for about 16 years. I'm also a volunteer with Fair Districts Pennsylvania, which is seeking a constitutional amendment.
You're going to have to talk into the mic, sorry.
Sorry, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. We're seeking a constitutional amendment to the PA Constitution to end gerrymandering in the state. PA is one of the poster childs of gerrymandering across the country. In front of you is a resolution to adopt redistricting reform and we're hoping that it will pass. We have approximately 80 municipalities across the state in 12 different counties that have passed resolutions in support of redistricting reform and we're hoping that Doylestown Township will be one of them. 10 in Bucks County have also passed this resolution. It is non-binding, but it sends a clear signal to our state legislature that the citizens of this township are not down with gerrymandering anymore. So I don't believe it's ceremonious. I do believe that it affects the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of this community and I'm urging you to pass it. I have copies of it, I can leave with you as long as you allow me to do that and if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them if I can.
Well, you cited our provision in our municipal code that our authority comes from the protecting the health, safety and welfare of our residents. How does this resolution do that?
Well, the resolution goes to not only the governor and the lieutenant governor and the attorney general, but everybody all the way down through the, you know, the county commissioners. It sends a signal to people. It has no teeth in terms of, you know, legally it's not binding, but it, it does say something. You are our voice to the state legislature. I truly believe this. And it helps to set public policy, it helps in a number of ways. When you're drawing district lines, who determines who controls the governing body, shapes the legislative priorities? It determines what bills get, what bills get passed into law, ones, you know, and others never even get a vote. So good government reform, like redistricting, impacts our state's fiscal health and economic competitiveness and when it works, it serves the broader public interest. So I do believe that it does run directly to the health, safety and welfare.
Kim, with all due respect, and you heard me say it to the other one, the other, you know, the gaming et cetera.
I did.
You know, that's not my purview in the township. Why don't, I have a trouble with the budget in Harrisburg, I have a trouble with the pension. We could spend the whole day sending resolutions to Harrisburg if we want to do that, or to, or to Washington with all the issues and all the trouble that I feel passionately about. And I just don't believe we should get into being a resolution machine and every meeting coming up with three or four or five more, there's, there's a lot more just as important as gerrymandering that we could be bringing. I just don't think that's our, our purview and I don't think, you're the voice to Harrisburg. You sending a letter to Harrisburg means something, or to your representative or to your senator.
But you are our representatives in the township. And, and gerrymandering is basically voter suppression under another name.
I understand.
I mean, it's central to good governance.
Well, I don't agree with it, but I understand.
Well...
We don't, I, you heard my point of view. I don't think we should be doing resolutions here. I'm just one voice. I don't think we should be sitting here doing resolutions at every meeting, regardless of how important it is. So don't misunderstand me.
Right.
After going through this and thinking about this for some time, I think ending gerrymandering is an important issue. And I do think, and I disagree with Rick, I do believe we should support it with a resolution. So I would like to make a motion that we support and adopt this resolution that was drafted in here.
Is there a second?
I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not against this, I just haven't had enough time to digest it yet, so I'm, I'm not ready to vote on it at this time, that's where I am.
Ms. Mannion, we have former Congressman Jim Greenwood speaking tomorrow in Doylestown about gerrymandering and you are invited. I will send you the contact information.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just naive to...
Right.
Everything around it, frankly.
He's a terrific speaker, as I'm sure you're aware.
Yep.
And it's 7:00 PM at Wellesley Enhanced Living, which is 200 Veterans Lane. Everybody here is welcome to come join and come learn something. No, it's more night.
Looking for a second? Is there a second?
I would recommend table, motion table.
All right. Work wants to make a decision at another time, so is there a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table, not, I'd like to, to, I'm, I'm... Yes, yeah, exactly. So, motion to table, maybe to the next meeting?
Motion carries.
Well, they haven't voted yet.
All right. I'm moving the motion to, actually, moving the motion to table.
Motion table does need a vote.
Moving the motion...
To table.
To table.
I move the motion to table to the next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You voting aye for it, to table?
Oh, yeah, I'm aye. But I made the motion the first time.
Well, table, no.
Aye, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, moving on. Ta-da. Okay. Reports from the solicitor.
I have nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda.
Police chief.
Just a quick public service announcement here. The DEA for many of you, the Drug Administration is, Drug Enforcement Administration is holding its fourth annual, or 14th National Take Back Day. Basically, for those of you that don't want, that is an opportunity for you to dispose of your unused or unneeded prescription medications. The next one they're having is October 28th and we'll be taking part in that. The two locations in the township's date will be the Doylestown Hospital, the Emergency Department, and again, will be down at Redner's Warehouse. For those of you that can't make those dates, we do have a drop-off point here at the police department, it's out in our lobby, so if you can't make it. Even though that the DEA does this nationally several times, I think they've been doing it twice a year for the last several years. Bucks County has a number of these drop-off points throughout the county and we do recover a lot of unused medications here, so feel free to drop them off or attend the, the dates on October 28th. What is...
Please announce that.
Okay. Give me a second to...
I need new glasses, chief.
Do you know when this meeting is? Okay, Saturday, it looks like District Attorney Matt Weintraub is going to have a town hall meeting on Saturday, September 23rd between 10:30 and 11:30 AM at the Bucks County Community College in the lower Bucks campus down in Bristol. There'll be a number of representatives from Bucks County as well as the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol and it will be addressing the opioid epidemic across the country. I would encourage anybody to, who's available, to pass that information on to anybody that may need it or to attend it and please spread the word because it is a national epidemic.
Thank you. Any else?
I have nothing further at this time. Nothing to say.
No? Director of Operations.
I have a quick presentation regarding the status of the municipal complex and then a few agenda items, so just to give a quick update on where we're at and some of the department issues, so. Just to give a quick project overview on the, how the project structured. Phase one of construction is the, the projects, see there, the police carport and large evidence storage, the fleet maintenance building and the public works building. We obviously have demolition of the existing administration and police building, which is this building. And then phase two of construction is construction of this building and the police building and the parks and recreation building located off of New Brit Road. So, so anybody who's not familiar with it, and those are the terms I'll be using as I follow, go through this presentation. Phase one construction status is as follows, on June 6th of this year, a notice to proceed was issued to a multi-prime contract. We have five prime contractors, general contractor, MEP plumbing, fire protection and electrical. Original completion date based on 120-day construction schedule was, is October 4th of this year and right now we are slated to be completed tentatively for the, right around Thanksgiving, approximately seven week delay or, not, we're behind schedule. What are the impacts? Obviously, moving our fleet maintenance into the new space as well as relocating the police, evidence storage out of this building, which then delays demolition and start of construction for phase two. We will be moving within the next two weeks, oh actually, yeah, the next two weeks, early October into the trailers located on the basketball court adjacent to the tennis courts. Phase two design development is ongoing. Currently, the architectural engineering plans, bid documents are being prepared and are ready for review by the township staff and the building committee. Phase two bidding is scheduled for early October. Hazardous abatement, material abatement, which is, takes place in this building, will be pushed back to, a little bit to mid-October. When we get out of here, that includes this room and, and into other rooms in this building, into our foyer area of the admin building for removal of that material. Phase two bid opening is scheduled for, going back real quick, phase two bidding is early October, I skipped that. Hazardous materials, mid-October. Phase two bidding, bid opening is early November and then obviously demolition has been moved back to late November. Okay? This is where we're really getting to some of the meat of the details here is where we're at. I'll jump down to bottom real quick and you can see the project budget was, is, was set at 12 million. That was the original $10 million bond issue plus then discussion for a $2 million, additional $2 million bond issue. So I have, would hear mixed costs of actuals versus estimated cost and also thrown in soft costs. So phase one actual costs right now are at $2.17 million. That's based on bids and change orders to date. Phase two is estimated and that was based on an estimate prepared by JD Bravo, our construction management firm, who prepared the original estimate in June, revised it in July, and that is estimated right now at $11.1 million. You have soft costs, some are estimated actuals for the following items, but it's not all-inclusive, including architecturals, engineering, you can see what's the items there. Our trailer, cost plus rental, the abatement, tank, and other items, we, generators that we purchased that go into this, to that number. And so you could see right now, actuals plus estimated plus soft cost equal to 15.3 million. Obviously, now we are over the initial bond-ish, you know, discussion and project budget of the 12 million at the 3.31. Okay? Any questions on this slide? So now we come back to what really is the, you know, causing this? Some of it was, you know, we had originally set that budget based on the architects, the architects' construction costs. We're fairly close on those. If we were to look at those next to each other, the, the actuals versus the estimated construction costs for phase one plus phase two compared to Phillips and Donovan's costs, they're pretty close, but we've had, we had some additional costs that were estimated in phase two for the site work and some soft costs that were not really included in that. And so right now, and also we're seeing that the Activities Building is a raw site, so we're seeing that building and the site cost for that, and you can see right now, estimate...
With the other designs. Again, I can't speak to it. I was just asked to revise the drawings.
Could we get, sorry.
As I said, we did look at the change order. We did comment on the change order and I believe this is about as best as you can do.
And can we get, yeah, we don't need to micromanage, but they're good questions.
One of the, one of the ideas was instead of having two pipes in the ground running to the same building and to tee them off out in the, in the yard, okay, we're out in the, in the Public Works Road driveway, is to bring one line in and, and tee it off in the building instead of out there. So that was, that was one thing. So.
But the other thing is this, this is generated by, and I keep saying, Pulelo or, or Polella?
Puelo, I guess that's, yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and so I'm, I'm going through that and I'm getting a little bit antsy. And then I see a letter that you wrote to them, which was, you know, pretty strong about some issues you have with them and told them they got, did they ever respond? They had five days to respond or hit the road?
They responded and we've, we didn't receive the, this, and the, the letter you're referring to is, is basically due to the delay in the construction and we asked them to basically produce a, a recovery schedule to meet that, that schedule I put up and then to basically try to get back on schedule or what was going to be the impact of, of the delays.
Did they give you answers to all those?
We finally have a revised schedule and I have the other prime contractors looking at, at that to make sure that they agree because they're all separate contracts. There's five separate contracts. So that's just the way the public bidding has to be broken out.
Well, I know that, but now, now you need five other contractors to approve this one change.
Not the change, the sched, the schedule.
The change in schedule.
Yeah, right. Well, that, you know, but that's the, you know, and one thing as I brought Rob Callan in, who's managing, who's Phase Two construction, to console on this because I said there's, you know, we're delayed. What, can you help me out to, you know, understand and what are, what are our obligations and rights here? I also spoke to Mr. Garten about this before we issued the letter, okay, to make sure that we are protecting ourselves, but also have enough of a hammer here to, to move forward and get things done, okay?
I just get nervous about, you know, again, this is not the first change order and like, and when we're talking about already being over budget for Phase Two and then, I mean, these, these are going to add up and just not having like a, a full scope of right now, it's not, we had to do this because. It's just kind of, you know, I, I, I'd prefer more clarification on this specifically and, and also to that, make sure we have, see, you know, this popping up just as one individual change order doesn't give you the full scope of things.
If we, if this isn't approved tonight, we'd slow things down even further, yes?
Right.
Have they done this work yet?
In actuality, um, they may have dug and put the, you know, the water line in, the part of it, yeah.
So they may have already done part of the work without the change order being approved?
I will also say there was a discrepancy, discrepancy in the plans. Yes, yes, part of it was done. There was a discrepancy in the plans as well. If you go back to the, looking at the fires, the, all the, all the construction plan sets, there was a discrepancy and trying to clarify the discrepancy, we said, let's make this one line coming in, okay? Because again, today, this is our site and, and we also consulted with Keith regarding the supply and he, he made his recommendation and so that was part of it as well.
Dave, it's nothing, it's nothing about you or anything personally. You're doing 10 things at once and I fully appreciate and respect what you're doing. It's just when I see seven weeks is, is a lot.
No, I agree. Well, that's, that's a separate issue.
Okay.
So if we want to address the schedule, let's adjust the schedule and the construction separately than the change order and I, so, yeah.
I, it's just the accumulation of all that. And I'll just end by saying that I, I'm going to recuse myself from the voting because the subcontractor twining construction, the owner's a friend of mine. So I'm going to recuse myself, so I'll leave it up to the other four members of what they want to go.
Ryan, where's he?
He's a subcontractor.
He's a subcontractor. So if you go, if you go through the, the change order con, documents, it's the subcontractor generated the change order and then it goes to Puelo, who is the, is the prime contractor for him and he, it goes through that. We do not have a contract with twining, okay, technically.
Right, I just want to stay out.
We don't.
No, he's a subcontractor.
He's a subcontractor.
But it's already done, so I mean, what, where, where are we left with? I mean, they've already done it.
Well, I think we're stuck with this situation right now.
Yeah.
But going forward, I think we really need to have a handle on this, you know. When we started this project, you know, I said no change orders, blanketly, no change orders. And we've had like six now. There has to be, I know that there are corrections and alterations and additions and all that jazz, but there has to be a full explanation.
Well, and that's, that's exactly what I was going to ask, is that maybe not part of a board supervisor meeting, but hopefully at one of our construction meetings, I want to make sure there's a good thorough change order review process and that when you come forward, you have all that information at your disposal to answer these types of questions. So we need to make sure you're getting all the right info.
What I will say is the change order process that we go through is not something that the contractor says, let's do this and we say, yes, and we go through the process.
You don't need to explain it now, I'm just saying, let's review it.
I mean, that's just, we vet this stuff out and, and we felt that this was better for us in moving forward with our building and having to maintain it and our water line. So I understand, so I will, I will do that.
So I would make a motion, we approve this. We need to get, only because it is urgent, we need to get it going. We need to not go past the seven weeks, let's keep it moving. But I do want a thorough review on the change order process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments? I just, I'm, I, I mean, I, I understand that we need to get through with it, but like I, I don't even know the, the purpose of voting on it. It's already done. We have to vote on it, you know, it's just, I, I'm not going to approve a change order again when the change has already been done and we're on the hook for the money. So moving forward, you know, we can't, we can't, even if we're in time crunches here, we have to get the approval for the change order in order for the work to take place.
That's exactly right. That's the process.
All right, some motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving along. One abstention.
I have a bridge inspection proposal. It was put forth by Pinoni Associates to conduct bridge inspections for our bridge structures. If you look at my attached memo, there are, at the description at the bottom, seven bridge structures greater than eight foot in length, 17 pipe structures and 15 trail structures. Cost breakdown for each, $18,670 for the bridge structures, $12,380 for the pipes and $10,800, $980 for the trail structures totaling $42,360. This is a continuation of professional engineering services that Pinoni has done now. This would be the third cycle for our bridge inspection process. Attached is a memo from Matt Johnston outlining the project. If the board approves this or approves moving forward, we would have Pinoni put together an engineering proposal to be executed.
All right, this is something that we've been doing, we need to do it.
It's a public health issue, so we've got to do this.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second please?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, one more item. I have a request to send Mr. Chris Mason, a member of our public works staff who works on primarily on our parks department, to training. He is, this is for a certified playground safety inspector. It is, includes an overnight stay. The tuition is for $475 and lodging per night total, two nights totaling seven, $178, total $653.
And then Mr. Mason would be certified in addition. Karen Sweeney, yes?
And Mr. Shea.
And Mr. Shea.
Correct.
So he's three.
Mr. Shea doesn't do it anymore since he's moved out of the park, so he's not renewed his, we need a backup to Karen.
Now, I make a motion to approve this. Education, I think we should even foster some more.
Absolutely. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stephanie? I'm sorry, Dave.
That's it. I'm done, thank you.
Just one question around that. By having staff that is certified, does that reduce our inspections from other agencies? Like does anybody from the state come in and certify?
No, it doesn't. We still have outside inspections, yeah, we still have.
Yeah, the state does not come out to inspect them. However, as backup, as part of our liability insurance, they come out every year and inspect as well.
Insurance company guys, okay.
And Karen has always gone with, when they come out.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Stephanie?
I have nothing that we won't discuss.
Supervisors, you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Ken?
Uh, yes, two items. The first one is for my fellow board of supervisors. I had met today with the pension subcommittee, the working subcommittee, and reviewing some of the materials that they've been putting together. They're going to do that presentation on October 3rd back to the board of supervisors. So what they would like to do is schedule time with each of you to review this, to get you more up to speed on what this information is really included and what it sounds like. So I would ask you to, when they call, free up your calendar before the October 3rd date just so that you can get it reviewed prior to them coming to you and doing the formal presentation.
I assume they're taking us to lunch or something off the job?
Yeah, sure. Second question I had, or comment I wanted to make was really around how do we collect information about what our residents want? And while we have a great number of committees and a lot of excellent volunteers on those committees, I would like to see us reach out and collect more information from the residents and this would obviously cover all the areas that we have and it could come from, you know, the parks, the bike and hikes, could involve sewer, or it could be just how about how we communicate. The last time we did a community survey was 2007. So I would like to see initiative started where, one, we get a few people to say, okay, what is that survey going to look like and working with each of the committees? And I think it's time that we go back out and reach them, reach to a broader audience than just our committee members and get more input from the residents.
Can we use our Google groups and social media to do that?
Well, I wouldn't let those people decide how we're going to do it. This is just trying to float the idea and see if.
The last time we did it was in connection with the joint Park and Rec.
Open Space Comprehensive.
Open Space Comprehensive Plan. And that was well-funded and the committee was in place for about a year before that survey was actually done. It's a lot, it's a needed process to take that.
I'm sure it is and that's why I'm saying it's 10 years old too. So, you know, a lot of homes have changed over, there have a lot of new residents, a lot of things have changed in the township. So I think it's an appropriate time to go out and try to pull something together again.
Well, I would suggest that we wait until we get through the building process because I don't know about anybody else, but there's very little time for the staff or committee people even to be doing anything extra right now. I know I'm, you know, with the bicentennial in 2018 and the building in 2018 and the sewer project in 2018, 2020, that, I don't know about you, but I'm tapped out in terms of any extra time. Park and Rec, we're going to be building, you know, doing all kinds of things with Park and Rec perhaps and then Central Park. I would just put this off a year.
Or it's an option, I, I, easy option maybe to do that, you know, to have or someone have suggestions or, you know, I'm willing to still listen to it, rather than put it off for a year and a half.
Okay, just a thought.
So are we saying, okay, if I pursue a few ideas and come back?
Oh, sure. I'm just throwing out.
I just want to make sure you're aware of it.
I don't know that there's going to be, not, at least not from this chair, not, not chairman, but chair.
And I completely understand the workload.
My human being is not.
I'm fully supportive, so, okay.
No, no, actually.
We'll just bounce the idea around and see what can come up.
Especially since we're working on the, the communication system with the residents. Perhaps there's an avenue in that process that, again, is online, it's Google group, it's Facebook, all that other stuff.
Okay.
Facebook.
So make sure you're aware of it, okay.
Thank you. MySpace, Facebook. Okay, moving on to the public hearing.
Is that JFSD?
Those other supervisors. I'm sorry, Chris?
I have two things.
Thank you.
One, I'd like to let everyone know that hasn't read the paper or seen it, Barbara did an excellent job representing the township at the Doles Town Hospital groundbreaking and I'm sure she'll talk a little bit about it when it's her turn, but I just wanted to thank her on behalf of the board plus the township. She represents the township very well, as you know.
Thank you.
And the second thing is, since the last meeting, we had a, the planning commission had an onsite meeting with Mr. Callan, who's looking at adding two homes off of Warden Road and Tabor Homes in that mix there. And after a few months of consternation, we, we seemed to have come to an agreement that we would meet onsite. And as I hope you would expect, it went very, very well. After we got over the first 10 minutes with residents and engineers and township people, everybody calmed down and we had good, well, meaningful conversations. I think we came out of that with some ideas and some way to go, at least to calm things down, to try to make everything amenable to everybody. So you'll be seeing that project in the next few months or the beginning of the year, Callan Project, C-A-L-L-A-N, but we've now gotten, after six months, gotten squared away and I think you'll be seeing it with some nice improvements. Those are my two points.
Thank you. Ryan?
Uh, two quick things. Bike and Hike Committee met this morning. The dedication for the trail on Lower State Road, which I'm sure many people see because they're, they're driving that to the connector from 202 to the borough, it may look done, but it's not done. So ride at your own risk. There are signs there that say, trail is closed, though everybody is out there enjoying it and it's great to see even with the trail closed signs, you know, people are ready to go on that trail. The dedication will take place sometime in November. There's a few details that we have to continue in, in terms of work to get done, but that's exciting. And then the other thing I just want to bring to attention, just a, a community event happening this Saturday, there will be a rededication for our Bucks County fallen heroes. Their banners will be rededicated behind, the Goldman family has been generous enough to grant the space of Freedom Square, which is the park behind Puck, to hang these banners again and all of our Bucks County fallen service members post 9/11, a few of you are from right here in Doylestown Township, their banners will be rededicated there at 4:00. Congressman Fitzpatrick will be speaking and we invite all of our residents to come out and take part in this. Thank you.
Thanks. That's good to know. Save the date. The bicentennial gala is January 6, 2018, Doylestown Country Club. Save the date, you're all going to get invited. And yeah, thanks for reminding me of Doylestown Hospital groundbreaking for the Richard Rife Heart and Vascular Center. It's sort of like a $30 million project, a terrific event, very well organized. Proud to represent Doylestown Township. Doylestown Hospital is one of our largest employers. It's a great neighbor, it's a great community member and we're very grateful that they're in our community. A homegrown institution that's now getting national recognition, so good for them. Is anybody here from the hospital? I knew you were on the agenda later. I'm seeing nobody, okay. The other thing is, if you wonder why the back, that, that back wall looks like that, we had a fantastic event here on Saturday organized by the bicentennial, kicking off our demolition of this building and bicentennial. We just messed up. The kids came with silly string and paint and everything, their parents, and messed up that wall and other parts of the building. Had a fun time outside with an actual wrecking ball, won a cattle lever and a facsimile of our building and crashing it down with black ball pinatas. And then from there, we went to Central Park and had a huge picture taken of everyone who was here. And we even, we even emptied the people out of Kids Castle to join in the photograph and we had people from all over, actually all over the world. There were some folks here from India that were in the picture from Central Park on Saturday. Food and then a band, The Big Chill. It was a wonderful event and had a blast, so I had kudos to the bicentennial committee for all that work and to Stephanie and her staff for, you know, getting enough silly string.
We have some extras, I know a couple of board members.
Silly string.
We have an extra hat.
And thank you, Pinoni, for the bicentennial, you know, crash house. So I really appreciate everyone's hard work, but save the date, January 6, 2018. Big party. Cocktail attire, Doylestown Country Club. More detail to follow. All right, next item on the agenda is the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the seven area municipalities on the recycling with Huff Associates.
By May, many years the township has cooperated with Chalfont Borough, Doylestown Borough, New Britain Borough, New Britain Township, Warrington and Warwick Townships. And they cooperate with respect to aggregating the recyclables that all the residents do and submitting that information to the state who then reimburses or makes a grant back based on the volume of material that's recycled. DEP concluded that they didn't want to have these cooperative ventures, but then they rescinded that notion and said, well, if you have an intergovernmental cooperation agreement that's provided for in state law, you can do this. So that made a lot of sense because it just memorialized what's been going on for several years. But under the statute, to have an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, you have to adopt an ordinance approving it. So at the board's direction with authorization, I prepared the appropriate ordinance, duly advertised it and what it does basically is it approves the intergovernmental cooperation agreement between those boroughs and townships so that you can aggregate your grant application with respect to the recycling efforts and then it's dispersed based on volume of the various municipalities. This is all coordinated through Huff and Associates who basically has been the consultant for the group for some years. So the matter's now ready for your consideration. You have to conduct a public hearing because it is an ordinance, but that's the purpose.
Okay, we've opened up the hearing. Comments or questions or considerations from the board members? Anything? Anything from anyone out there? Hearing done? I think we're good to go on.
Motion.
I'll make the motion that we enter an intergovernmental agreement.
Approve the ordinance.
I'll approve the ordinance that lets us get into an intergovernmental agreement with Huff Associates and other.
I'll second. Okay, any other considerations, questions, comments? All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Next topic, I'm going to give my seat to Matt McHugh.
All right, next item on the agenda is a Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority Agreement. It's not a final draft, regrettably. It's still in consideration. There were some questions, one mostly on my part, absence of a paragraph. And then the other question I had was, paragraph 16, but I'll let everyone else go ahead of me if there's something. Sean, you have anything on this? Ken, do you have anything on this?
Um, nothing right now because we just got the last version today, so.
Well, do you want to talk about what you have in front of you for the last version?
I didn't, I didn't finish reading the last version, that came out today.
Oh.
All right. I don't know which one I have that. I have one that doesn't have paragraph 13.
That's the one that came out today.
Okay, so, but since Ken can't comment and, well, my, my question is on paragraph 16 tap-in fees. There's a reference to current tap-in fee for the area to be served by the system of In addition, the authority shall conclusively determine the amount of EDUs required for each property prior to or at a time of connection of said property. And the owner shall be required to purchase the requisite number of EDUs required. Now, is that different than paragraph 21, which says, of multiple EDUs, or is that somehow?
Right. Paragraph 21 includes if you have multiple lots, you're going to be required to purchase at least one EDU per lot unless you, unless you merge your lots into one.
Okay, so what's this paragraph then?
16 would allow for if there's certain residential requirements, multifamily or something like that, where more than one EDU would be required for that subject property. The authority will take a look at that. It's anticipated the majority of these properties will only have one EDU, but if something does come up, the authorities request that the authority be to assess that situation and determine the amount of EDUs that are required for the subject property and the property owner would be required to.
So that, 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 does that just prove?
It's just more clarification.
For multiple family.
For multiple family.
So, okay.
There is one property out there that has apartment, is a non-conforming with apartment on it. It could also be that there could be a property that maybe has a separate in-law suite.
In-law suite or something of that nature.
Okay, okay.
While, while we're on that, do we, I got some comments on that too. I, just because I have an in-law suite.
Do you have an in-law suite?
I don't, but I'm, I'm pretending I'm a resident in the neighborhood here. Just because I have an in-law suite, you're going to charge me an extra $6,200 even though, I mean, I, I, I'm not going to, how do you know if I'm going to generate any more waste? What, what criteria do you have for the EDU?
I can tell you, if you build an in-law suite and you don't have servers, you have to put in a separate system on, on site, on lot system. So why wouldn't there be?
No, I don't.
Well, I did.
Well, that's.
I mean, you do, if you have to, if you need to. I'm just saying.
But you see what I'm saying? If I have an in, an in-law suite, you're going to look at that and say, oh, extra EDU? What criteria are you going to use?
It's separate distinct. An in-law suite doesn't, the township's ordinance has restrictions about the content. And if you're providing with public water, the EDUs will be determined.
Sorry.
If you are receiving public water, the EDUs will be determined based upon your water consumption, which will generate the amount of the sewer usage.
Right.
But if you're on, if you don't, if you only have an in-law suite, it's not a separate unit. It's like you had a five-bedroom house versus a four-bedroom house. So there's, it's just a matter of each individual situation. I don't think they're talking about in-law suites as being subject to additional EDUs. I think we're talking about the multifamily housing developer, project used to be the old bar on Bristol Road.
I, I guess it's maybe the language. It says, in addition, the authority shall conclusively determine the amount of EDUs required for each property. How are you going to do that?
Well, through water flows, water consumption, that's how you do it for those that have public water. But as far as on lot, it would depend on an analysis of the usage, I guess.
Right.
And there are manuals that tell you that if you have X number of bathrooms and whatever it tells you, but the intent here, and I, I'm not going to speak for Matt, is just to cover those multifamily facilities, not in-law suites.
And I just picked in-law suites as an example.
Yeah.
And we, I'm sure we have some multifamily, I'm not sure. There could be some multifamily, you know, with, with the grandparents and the kids.
Well, no, multifamily is not what means, if you have parents, it means separate units, like apartments.
Separate units, like apartments. I know, I know we have one apartment.
We have one that has four different apartments plus other uses on it.
I guess the language of the authority will conclusively determine.
Well, if you want to subject industry standards, you want to incorporate that language, that would make sense.
That was going to be my suggestion, or there's, or the authority's standard rules and regulations that are currently in effect.
Now I'm happy.
You're happy now?
I'm happy, thank you.
Anything else, Chris, that you wanted to bring up at this point?
That's it for 16, I've got a couple other ones.
Please do.
While you're looking, can I just comment on one thing because it's regarding the tap-in fees? I'm still, I'm still having trouble going back and forth about the fact that Bucks County Water and Sewer cannot do anything regarding these tap-in fees, even if it was in incentive, incentivizing the residents to hook up. And, and I know that a lot of the residents were in favor of something to that degree because it doesn't benefit anyone if none of them hook up. So the idea that we're saying, too bad, you're paying $6,200 when you hook up, I mean, there's a lot of people that are going to say, forget it, I'm not going to hook up and for 20 years till I sell my house. And I, I don't know that we're, I just don't know that I, I felt like I've gotten a good enough answer to justify why we can't look into that more. It was just like, well, they don't want to do it. Bucks County Water and Sewer doesn't want to do it. That's kind of how it's been given.
I would think that Ms. Mason should write a letter to the chief executive officer and raise those questions because I don't think that the authority board has considered it.
I would agree with some.
I thought they were considered.
I would agree with her.
My knowledge, the authority board has not considered it.
Well, you told me that you talked to them and they said no.
That's their... Yeah, they're administrative.
I also spoke to the engineer and he said no. But I think it's a great idea that we, as a board, support, you know, a discount for the EDUs if someone who's hooking up and they don't have to hook up.
Yeah. Because...
That's go board to board.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be chairman to chairman. I don't care. I'll do it. I'll go see them personally.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I just think, you know, there are residents right now that want to hook up. And there are residents that probably would say that are on the fence, but if they know, "Hey, if we hook up now, it's going..." You know, "We can get it at this price versus..." I mean, I just think... And it's... And frankly, it's us saying to the residents, "We're trying to help you out in this way."
Absolutely.
So, okay, great.
All right.
Can I just... I agree with Ken. You know, getting this late, and even though I failed Evelyn Wood course, I need more time so, you know, to get maybe more minutia done. But just one other thing is your question about paragraph 13. Can we talk about that for a minute?
The absence of paragraph 13.
The absence of paragraph 13.
Paragraph 13 was removed, and that was... There was a discussion regarding the possibility of residents being able to prepay their assessment cost upfront prior to commencement of construction. The authority made an offer that they would be willing to discount the assessment cost by an upfront payment relative to the interest expense that is... That they are saving over the course of the Penn Vest loan. When we try to put that into words and we look at the actual numbers, the actual interest savings to the residents is negligible to the point that it's almost, I think, almost misleading to a certain extent that it makes it sound as if they're going to be able to pay. Because the number is not going to be set until right before construction occurs because they're not going to know until we get into the Penn Vest loan what the actual interest savings are. And then you divide that by potentially 252 residents. So the number is going to be a small reduction. You're still going to be taking the upfront payment from the residents of somewhere in the range of $34,000, $33,000. It's not going to significantly reduce the assessment cost. I think it's... The paragraph seemed to be a little bit misleading in the concept that there would be a significant discount isn't really there. It seems better served to have the residents hold on to that money on their own, do with it what they please as opposed to the authority holding on to it.
But again, we also told the residents that night that there would be...
No, no, please, no.
I think the conversation... I think that there was a question that was certainly raised.
Yeah.
And it was that, I think, either Mr. Garden or Mr. Dyke mentioned that something that the authority would... We could ask the authority, and I brought that up to their attention, and that was their response. So it was incorporated when we got their response. It was then taken out as we really crunched the numbers on it because it doesn't seem like something that is really any savings to the residents.
Actually, I thought the discount would occur after assessment and everyone paid... And that person paid upfront.
Yeah.
That's where the discount would occur. And that's what I would ask them to consider.
And we consider...
If the discount would occur, well, I'm assessed $34,000. And I'd want to pay it in cash upfront. I pay $31,000 instead of $34.
Right.
Is that... That's what I understood the request to be.
That should be in your letter.
Okay, we'll do that, too.
Great.
Matt, what is it... I'm sorry, but you said it wasn't a significant amount. And I... Believe me, I think it's an administrative nightmare trying to figure out.
Certainly.
And so I understand that.
And I can't give you the exact number because we don't know the amount of the Penn Vest loan. We don't know what the interest will actually be and then what the number of... So it comes down to, but it's not going to be significant. It may be a couple hundred dollars. It may be a thousand dollars. I don't...
That's for the interest after.
The interest.
No, it was before construction.
It had to be before construction.
Now, I'm talking after.
Right now, if we did it that way, it's a different story, I think.
That's what I was anticipating that that question would serve.
That would be an assessment number minus, you know...
Be 20% discount if you paid upfront.
Right. The actual... The system cost would be determined at that time. We would know what the assessment would be, and then you could ask for a discount from that for an upfront payment.
Yeah, I understand that part, but the original one was the interest.
That was not what... Right. That was not what was offered by the authority when we asked them about the interest discount.
The other thing I had was there's no exhibit B, but I assume Stephanie's still working on that.
Right. We had an exhibit in there, and then with the numbers changing a little bit, I want to make sure Stephanie's putting together an exhibit. Those will be consistent with each other, so those will be the same numbers.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay. So we have two action points here. We're going to do a letter on behalf of the board to the board of Bucks County Water and Sewer requesting that they reconsider a discount to tap-in fees when people hook up and they don't have to hook up. And also a prepaid, once the assessment is issued, the resident's homeowner can pay the entire upfront with like a 20% discount. I'll say 20% discount and we'll see what happens. Okay?
We'll just ask.
Yeah. If, you know, go on forward. We want to have a good relationship with every member in this community, and that would be their motivation.
Any questions from the residents?
Okay. We're going to table this agreement. Is there a motion to table this for now?
Yes, I'll make the motion table, but I'd like to...
I understand.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any conversation, questions, comments from anyone out there? Mr. Wood, would you take the microphone, please?
You'll have to excuse me. When I heard this board just say that we're going to look into waiving the tap-in fee or at least asking about it, which is great. I'm glad you guys are looking into that. But last month, in August, in the July meeting, you had citizens asking that same question. I spoke to citizens before the July meeting.
We've already talked to... We have already talked to the Bucks County Water and Sewer. Now we're taking a different approach. It went from engineer and the staff, and they did come back and say no. And now, and we continued, and I talked to the same residents, and I said, "We're going to continue to push for this." And on the recommendation, it's let's go board to board and continue that conversation. So we have to ask.
If there was a second option the entire time to talk to the board, why didn't we talk to the board of Bucks County Water and Sewer before we voted on this ordinance?
Well, we didn't... Oh, on the ordinance? No, we're talking about the contract here.
I understand that we're talking about the contract, but there are a lot of people that ask about...
I don't understand your point.
Well, my point is, there was... There are citizens that asked members of this board and circulated a letter asking the board to consider possibilities to waive the tap-in fee.
Which we said we would. I sat with those residents outside after the meeting, the ones that put that letter together.
After the meeting where you voted for the ordinance.
Right. Exactly. We voted for the...
Without discussing the tap-in fee. You just said that's...
We did discuss the tap-in fee that night, and we... And when they came to us and said, "We want to look into the tap-in fee," we said, "Yes, we're going to work with Bucks County Water and Sewer to see if we can get the tap-in fees." Not waived, but they were pushing for the early hookup.
There were people here who asked very eloquently about that, and it was dismissed saying that Bucks County Water and Sewer would not do that.
Again, Mr. Wood, what is your point? I mean, I see...
My point is...
We should have done something else according to you, but we've been doing that.
My point is, why was this other option not considered?
Well, it was. Both options were considered.
Then why we... If they were considered, why are we doing it now instead of before?
Well, because, you know, when you draft contracts and you enter agreements until they're actually signed, they're a living thing, you know? They take all kinds of forms. And you try one thing, it didn't work. We try another thing, that didn't work. Now we're going to try this thing. So we're all going to the same place, we hope. And we're just getting there. We have to try different things in order to do that. So I see your point, but I mean, we did what we said we were going to do, and we took all the comments we could from the residents, and we acted on them. And now that those actions didn't yield success, so we're going to try these actions. Same thing. Same, just different tactic.
I think you're trying to tie discounts with the ordinance. And I don't think there's a tie there.
Well, I'm trying to tie...
The tie is with the agreement.
Correct.
And discounts, not the ordinance.
But we passed an ordinance here without fully understanding or taking into account what people were asking for as far as this...
No, we're not passing this until we get...
That's not true, Dan.
That's not the case. The ordinance... The agreement in tap-in fees has everything to do with this agreement between Bucks County Water and Sewer. Okay? So when we left that night, and I stood out there with you, with those residents, okay? You were standing right there when I said to them, "Before this agreement with the Bucks County Water and Sewer gets passed, we are going to look further into the idea of how they can help out with the tap-in fee." And that's how we left that meeting. We show up, we got the agreement, we got revised versions, we have the revised version on our desk, and the recommendation is made, "Let's go board to board and see what we can do." So I don't... I don't understand what you're saying.
All right. Well...
I appreciate that you think those are the only citizens I talked to. I've talked to a lot more in that neighborhood. I grew up in that neighborhood, and I have lots of neighbors and friends there.
Well, we're going to get to where we... Everybody wants to be as best as we can.
And I hope you do. I really do.
We're fighting for the residents. We're fighting for the residents. And sometimes, you know, like I said, one tactic doesn't work, we'll try another one. But we're going to continue to work it until we get an absolute no or we get what we want. Okay? But thank you.
As I said in the beginning, I do thank you for pursuing this additional...
You're welcome. Thank you. No, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So is there a motion to table in a second? I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. Almost there. Almost there. All right, we're going to get that... We're going to get that letter out tomorrow to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority.
The chairman.
To the chairman of Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Thank you. Copy to all the board members. All right. Where the heck are we? Warrington Community Ambulance Corporation. Water... Warrington Community... Okay. Overview Financial Statement. This is information. We don't have to act on this.
Right, yeah.
It's nice of them to share their changes in the Warrington Community Ambulance does not affect Doylestown Township residents or our tax base or contributions, too. So they want us to know what's going on. Oh, hi. Please. Thank you for being here.
Happy to be here. My name is Mark Ikorn. I am a township resident, and I am the treasurer and board member of Warrington Community Ambulance. We're asking today that you reconsider a resolution that was done in 2009, which talks about funding the three ambulance services that service the township. You are represented by us in Warrington, Chalfont, and Central Bucks Ambulance. The resolution states that we are funded based on land area. We are asking that you consider a change to that resolution to fund all ambulances based on call volume. At the end of every year, when dispatch publishes the number of calls to the township by ambulance service, we ask that that number be divided by the amount that you budget every year for ambulance service, and everyone would get the same fee. If you look at the last page of that document right now, it's not equal. What's interesting in the statistic is that we provide 509 calls to this area of ambulance calls. There's a total of 1,789. This is 2016 numbers. But if you look at the cost and expense repayment per call, Chalfont gets $30, Central Bucks gets $72, and Warrington gets $20. And of course, when an ambulance is dispatched, it doesn't matter. It costs the same whether you're Chalfont or so on and so forth. So basically, we're asking for one paragraph to be changed in the resolution to change it from land area to number of calls. Very simple.
Okay. That is simple.
How do we do it with other services?
The fire service is the only one. It's the same way by land area.
By area?
Yeah. So the percentage that you see there is the same for the fire companies as it is. So it's the area that they're serving in the township, not numbers of call. Not numbers of calls.
Not calls.
But it seems like you should pay for what you use. And if we're a high user, we should pay more. If we're a low user, we should pay less.
Agreed.
No, everyone should pay the same. Remember, you're servicing... There's three ambulance companies that service this township. So what we're saying is that you take the number of calls and you divide it, and it's a flat rate. Everybody gets $50 a run instead of one gets 70 and somebody gets 20.
Right.
That's not right.
Should we hear from San Juan Ambulance?
Probably share this information with the other ambulance companies as well.
I think it's appropriate because...
And then have a discussion.
We created the tax on their agitation. I mean, they're the ones who came to us... Can you hear me there?
Yeah.
They're the ones who came to us, meeting after meeting after meeting, establishing their support for their expenses and saying, "Please create a tax so we get... We can collect, you know, what we don't collect from insurance companies and households for our ambulance service." So I think we need to talk to them first.
I agree.
All right. So we're going to do that, Mr. Ikorn. And then we'll put you back on the agenda.
Okay.
All right? Fair enough?
Yep.
Thank you. And so I'm going to ask them to comment and then get them back on. All right. DEP grants and funding. Van Dorn and Furlong.
So, I know Keith has, I think it's back there as well.
You better come up, Keith, because you've got questions here.
Yeah. Although the agreement's a little convoluted and we have to work this out, if the board will recall that we worked with Buckingham and Plumstead when we did the Cross Keys contamination, and we were able successfully to bring public water to an area in the township that had suffered with contamination. This project does the same thing with the Furlong area of the township. This goes back to Vandor Manufacturing, which was a property on NS Furlong that had contamination and contaminated a number of properties many, many years ago. And the residents out there have been living on bottled water and carbon filters. And the board may recall that back in 2008, the township, Buckingham, and the DTMA attempted to work with the DEP and they were willing to fund it at that point in time through the HASCAP money, the money that DEP has available for such projects. Unfortunately, there was not a valid source of public water out there at that time. We're fortunate now that there is a good source of public water out there and the authority has some plans to bring some additional public water to there. We do need to have an intergovernmental agreement with Buckingham Township. We're having a meeting on that with the attorneys and the manager and myself and Keith to have the intergovernmental agreement prepared and you'll see that in the near future. But we did receive the grant. The board will recall that you authorized the submission of the grant. We are the entity. We will be the lead agency as we were previously as the municipalities. It has to be a municipality. We're the lead agency, but the authority in a sense is carrying the water on this and we're being supportive. We have the grant and I know that DEP is anxious for us to get this grant document back to them so that we can start the process.
What's the new source of water? Wasn't there 10 years ago?
Buckingham.
Buckingham now has water.
Yeah, they now.
Buckingham is closer.
I'm sorry.
Where'd they get it from? They inhabit.
I think some new developers.
Development wells that are now secure and everything. And they now have ownership of those wells that were put in by developers. They now own them and maintain them.
Well, it sounds like we have to do this.
Yes. I mean, I hate press to let it face. This is a wonderful thing for the community. These properties out there, there's 43 of them, have suffered.
Well, we're going to, we can approve this, but it's got to be subject to an intergovernmental agreement.
An agreement, yes.
Which is being negotiated now?
Yes.
The discussion's coming up next week, I think.
Okay.
I think maybe even Friday, actually.
All right. All right. So what are we looking for here? Motion to approve the grant?
Subject to.
Just want to make sure. And the number of homes, I mean, you said 43. Is that every single one that's been impacted by this, whatever, is 20 years ago?
There's 43 properties. They're on the map. They have the map and they've identified the list.
Nobody dropped off and we have someone left hanging out there.
No, no. And there's 16 in the township. So, and just so the way DEP works this is that the residential properties typically are connected to public water source. They abandon their contaminated wells and then we work with the commercial properties typically. That's what we did in the Cross Keys to cover the appropriate expenses associated with the project.
So is there any cost at all placed on the resident?
No, there is not.
Not for residential?
Not the residential.
Distinguish between residential and
Commercial?
Commercial. We will need to have a mandatory connection for this area like we did for Cross Keys because we have contamination and DEP does not want that contamination to continue out there on those properties.
Have we communicated that to any of those 43?
We're going to be having another meeting with DEP. They will be hosting a meeting. That's what we did when we did the Cross Keys. They will host a meeting here and everything, probably within the next month or so.
Because some of those 43 are probably watching right now, so you're going to get phone calls.
They will. They'll be. And actually, I mean, DEP's still out there. They're still testing the properties. And according to DEP in the conversation we had with their representative recently, they're asking like, is there any way public water's going to become available? So I think they
Seems like they're interested.
Hope they're pleased when this
Sooner than later.
Sooner rather than later.
No, I agree. This is a good thing. Let's get it going.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the grant agreement entered in between Bucks County Water? Well, no, us. Doylestown Township, DTMA, DEP, and
Subject to the agreement with Buckingham.
Yes, subject to the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's not going to hold up this, will it? Subject to the agreement with Buckingham?
Well, if you don't have an agreement, you won't have water to actually do the project.
All right. So it won't hold it up. Okay.
We're good. Thank you.
Yeah, but I mean, it won't hold up the grant.
Well, but you won't be able to use the monies because you won't have any water to do it.
Oh, so we need an amendment?
You need to, yes.
No, but I mean, it won't hold up getting the money or getting the application approved.
The project needs to be completed by June 30th of 2018. So we are under a tight timeframe.
Wow.
Yeah. So we're starting to get our ducks in a row, but I don't believe it'll hold it up.
Okay.
Yeah, the two engineering firms, I mean Fred from the authority and Buckingham have been meeting and really working it to
It's a tight deadline.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good. All right, good. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Keith. Next item is we're sending vehicles to auction. I don't have that memory, though.
We have two vehicles, a 2002 Chevy Tahoe with 118,586 miles, and 2004 Jameson pickup truck.
Is there a motion to send those vehicles to auction? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Financial minimum municipal obligations for police non-uniform and non-uniform defined contamination.
You don't need to approve these. You just need to be notified of what your obligations are.
These were reviewed at the pension committee and the pension committee did recommend that the board acknowledge receipt of
Okay.
The appropriate documentation.
Okay. So noted. All right. Historical property request. I see the Heritage Conservancy here aptly represented by
Mr. Marshall.
Chris Canavan. So how big is this parcel? It's under 10 acres. Isn't it required that it be 10 acres?
Yes.
Okay. Just asking.
Hi, Chris Canavan with WB Homes. We are the equal owner of 3725 Bristol Road, which is at the corner of Bristol Road and the 202 Parkway. We are before you this evening requesting that the board consider adding this property to your official list of historic resources. We did have a report prepared by the Heritage Conservancy. Mr. Marshall is here to speak on that and answer any questions. The property is 8.91 acres. It was originally over 12 acres. The Parkway and the right-of-way take required for the Parkway took away the difference between those two areas. So we do recognize if we were to use your B-15 use, there would be some additional zoning relief necessary to allow for that. But the first step to going that route would be to see if the property would meet eligibility for your official list of historic resources. We discussed this request with the planning commission on two different occasions. The second occasion, the neighbors adjacent to the property were also invited to come out to discuss the application we're making. The planning commission did recommend that this property be added to your list. The property dates back to the 1780s, has historic connection to a Revolutionary War soldier, and we are asking that the board consider that. Mr. Marshall is here to add a few comments to the presentation if you would like to hear them, or we can just sit down and take your feedback.
Sit down and take your feedback. I think it's a great read, Mr. Marshall. Thank you very much. I found it very interesting and I agree with the planning commission that this house should be added to our list of historical properties, but that's just me.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to add this property?
To the public knows, there's no approval of any construction or development, just means that you're recognizing, as you have for a variety of other buildings in the township, this is a historic structure.
Was there a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right. Questions, comments? Anybody want to know anything about it? It's a great read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Good luck with the rest of it. You're welcome. Thank you, Jeff. Good job. It's a keeper. I mean, I really like reading about this guy. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Quinlan property. Is that right?
Yes. The applicant has requested the subdivided tax parcel 9-7-150-2, consisting of approximately 10 acres into eight acres. Each lot, probably into eight lots, I'm sorry. Each lot to be improved with a single-family detached dwelling. The current dwelling on the site will be removed. The lots will range in size from 30,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet and the plan includes 24 acres of open space. 2.4 acres, I'm sorry. Plans before you were prepared by Schlosser and Klaus engineers, were dated April 3, 2017, and were last revised August 24, 2017. Your planning commission at its meeting held on July 24, 2017, recommended approval of the preliminary's final plan, subject to various conditions. And if the board was inclined to approve the plan of the preliminary's final plan, I obviously have enumerated the appropriate conditions when you get to that point.
I think we're at that point.
All right.
Well, what about Brandon Way?
What about Brandon?
Sinclair Salisbury said that had to be approved, that name. Why does that name have to be approved?
The names are approved.
Yeah, okay, so
That would have eliminated Windy and Windy.
Approval of names, Brandon Way. Okay. So that's part of this approval.
Well, the name is, I don't know if the name's in the plan, but
It's not, is it?
Yes, it is.
Is it? So when you approved the plan, you approved the name?
Yes.
Well, you can approve the plan and not approve the name. Have them come back with a different name, I would assume.
Sinclair has approved the name. He went through the process that there were no similar names anywhere in the vicinity. So with that respect, he did do the research to suggest that this was a distinct name, not to be confused with a similar name near.
Yeah, yeah. I was just looking at the minutes from the planning commission that said that, however, the approval of the board is necessary for the name. Why do we have to approve that name?
It's on the plan because of similarity of other names. You don't like, you know, Doylestown this, Doylestown that.
Saldo requirements.
I know. Waiveable.
In any event, that's fine. Conditions if approved would be compliance of Boucher and James review letter dated September 8, 2017, compliance with the comments noted in the Bucks County Planning Commission review letter dated April 20, 2017, except, I believe the planning commission at all agrees, there's no need for a center island in the cul-de-sac. Compliance with the Pickering Course Somerset review letter dated 9/6/17, compliance with the Michael Baker National Review Letter dated September 12, 2017, compliance with the Penone Associates review letter dated September 5, 2017, next, compliance with the SC Engineers Review Letter dated September 11, 2017, compliance with the Environmental Advisory Committee Report dated July 18, 2017, compliance with the Director of Code Enforcement Correspondence dated July 20, 2017. Applicant is requested to follow the latest revisions of Section 15324E4, 15326A, 15334B3A, 15334B3B, 15334C5, and 15338D6 the planning commission was fine with. Applicant to pay a fee in lieu of 16 trees. Applicant shall include one street light to be a colonial lumiere light, street light. Applicant to find access to the open space for residents of the subdivision. Applicant to pay a fee in lieu of recreation in accordance with the town's fee schedule. Applicant to pay $1,000 per lot as an off-site contribution for each new single-family dwelling to be constructed, which will be paid at the time of the building permit, subject to any credits for any off-site improvements. Funding and execution of development financial security agreements, receipt of all permits, and approvals many agency having jurisdiction, including DTMA. Applicant to pay any old expenses incurred by the township with the application and the plan shall be ADA compliant. Mr. Schloss, do you agree to that as conditions?
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Garten for his work in organizing this, specifically with regard to acknowledgement of the credit for the off-site work that the applicant has volunteered, as well as within the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions with respect to working with the applicant with a fair and reasonable escrow amount for some trees that are to be protected.
You don't usually get thanked.
That's why I thought it was necessary to do that. As well as the township staff and consultants, they were a pleasure to work with through the process of this project, so I would like to say thank you to all of them. And with that, the applicant agrees to these conditions.
Okay. Very good. All right. Pleasure with the board?
Bar.
Yes, sir.
There is a Brandon Way. It's in Buckingham Township, about a mile down.
Is there? Okay.
Are you planning on, I assume, two-digit house addresses? Because Buckingham, I believe, uses four-digit codes.
Yeah. And they're O2 anyway.
That's interesting, though.
I believe both will be a Doylestown mailing address, too.
But O2.
O2. But we usually have smaller digits for the addresses.
Right. Sometimes it
That's a good point.
Sometimes it does create an issue.
Yeah.
It does. Like East Street and East Road?
Yes.
Is that something you're willing to, you know, we approve everything, but maybe come back with a couple of options?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so the modification would be that the name of the cul-de-sac will be reserved to the development agreement.
Can I make that motion?
All right. So you're moving for the approval with
With the condition, they'll come back with a couple of name differences. Appreciate that.
Okay. Is there a second? Approving the revised subdivision plan for the Quinlan property? There's a second with the condition that the new name be presented. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. You're good to go?
Thank you very much.
You can name a Barbara Lyons way. I'll take that.
I think we have a few of those already.
Just a street cleaner.
That brings up a good point. If the chief, you know, maybe Sinclair looks at just the township where the chief can get a broader look and maybe Sinclair could bounce names off the chief.
Is this an item that I should be in contact with the chief directly to go through?
Yeah, I would think.
You can always Google names, too, and see where they pop up on the maps in the Central Bucks area.
Yes, ma'am. I have no say in this.
All right, gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is requests for extension on the Callen track. Is there a motion to approve the request?
I make a motion we approve it. As I mentioned, we've had some issues and lumps, so this is good to extend it to December 23rd, 2017.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Doylestown Hospital Development Agreement.
Before you, is your consideration the development agreement for Doylestown Hospital. It's been prepared, consistent with your approval. The funds have been received. The agreement's been signed by the hospital. The letter of credit's been received, so I believe the staff would recommend the board approve the development agreement for the hospital. Since they already broke ground, it may be too late not to.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the development agreement for Doylestown Hospital?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the zoning hearing, board application of Brian Hitchin. 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 Going to the zoning hearing board without solicitor or what's your recommendation?
Yeah, they have a non-conforming lot. I think the zoning hearing board can do this. They built their deck not knowing they needed a permit. They have a very small side yard and, as I said, it's a non-conforming lot. I know last time we had a similar situation. We did send the solicitor, but they are not represented by any attorney on their paperwork at this point.
How did we find out that they built this thing?
The code department was out on something else and spotted it, so
Sinclair finds them all.
Did he do this personally or did a contractor do it, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Because we've run into a couple of times where contractors just do it and
Don't get a permit.
Now they come back and it's too late. Aren't these contractors supposed to, I'm sure they know they need a permit.
Depends on who's, you know, the contractor that you hire.
It'll be at the mercy of the contractor you hire. I don't know if Jeff has any comments, but is there some, I mean, is there an ordinance? They must come to us first?
Well, I guess, well, they have to get a permit to construct a deck.
And it's a responsibility of the property.
The homeowner bears the ultimate responsibility, but unfortunately, not all homeowners know that, so they rely upon people they hire. And sometimes the people they hire will know, well, I don't have a setback, but they do it anyway. So it'd be nice to know whether or not this is a contractor we ought to be on the lookout for.
Yeah, can we find out who that is?
Yeah, I'll find out from Sinclair tomorrow as to what it is. It's whether or not, as I said, their application indicates they're not represented by an attorney for the zoning hearing board. And, you know, they do, as I said, they don't meet, they have a variance, they have a hardship. So I mean, here's the same thing. They would have gone to the zoning hearing board first. They would have an automatic hardship because they don't meet the minimum side yard requirement anyway. So I believe the zoning hearing board can deal with this for board, you know, and not sort of save the expense of sending the solicitor, but if we feel they can be more beneficial with us there, we should take them.
No, I don't think we need to send the solicitor. I think we need to find out who the, if there was a contractor and who that person is so we can be on the lookout.
Yeah, I agree. We've got to look at a system here.
I guess that's not fair to the homeowner.
Yeah, I mean, I think beyond just looking at who the contractor was, it's Sinclair reaching out to the contractor. And I mean, I know it's the property owner, but again, there are very innocent situations that take place where people don't realize, you know, and the contractors know. So it's place and calls, you know, why was this deck done without a permit?
Okay. All right. So we're all in agreement? We just
Yeah, I mean, it's my feet. I mean, not minimizing it. It's my feet, but it's
All right. Next item is the treasurer's report for September 19, 2017. It's today. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the bills list for September 19, 2017.
Moves approved.
Okay. All in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I reckon dispense with announcements again. We've already done that once and it's a long night and we've got more to do except for save the date, January 6, 2018, for the bicentennial gala. The only one I'm going to mention. All right. We're adjourned for the regular meeting of the board. We are going to have a budget and board meeting now with our Ways and Means Committee.
We'll be moving to the back.
We shall be moving to the back. Look for that. Stay comfortable. When you guys need some time.